Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 2nd, 2015 Town Council Business Meeting. We will begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is a public forum, but there is no public here. So we will move on to Town Council to consider acceptance of minutes. Accept the motion on the November 18th, 2015 Business Meeting.
It's moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I do have one thing hanging.
Counselor Weinstein.
Sorry. I'm not sure what page it's on. The last page, which, page six of our packet, I guess it's page five of the minutes. Oh, sorry, oh, no. So, page six of the packet, page five of the minutes. And it says halfway through the first paragraph, "Thank Town Administrator Fornier and Chief Seer for their support," but it should also say Chief Malaski. I'm pretty sure I said Chief Malaski, and if I didn't, it was my fault, but it should...
Anything else, Counselor?
That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson.
On page two of the minutes, that would be three of the packet, under Report of the Town Administrator, second paragraph, it was talking about the Eagles Building, and Town Administrator had said that they still owed $500 from a town lease to develop the mill, but that the town no longer had an interest in developing the property. I think there's a clarification needed there in that I believe what you said, Steve, was that the town has no interest in developing the current property on Exeter Road.
No, it was the previous property.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We had an option on that at one point. That's what it was.
Okay. But then it did morph into the other. We don't as well have an...
No.
We don't have an interest in Exeter Road either. Okay. Okay.
Other comments? Seeing now, Mr. Administrator of the Vote.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Pickering.
Abstain.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Yep.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Report of the Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item is, I just want to remind everybody, this weekend, on December 5th, is the annual Merry Main Street Celebration in town. Events start at 8:00 a.m., with a craft fair and the annual holiday party, which will be from 2:00 to 4:00 in the mills. There's dozens of other events that day, ending with the 27th Annual Lighting of the Giving Tree from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. in Arbor Park. If you'd like more information for the public, they can go to newmarketrec.org. Highly recommend people try to swing by something. It's very enjoyable. The New Hampshire Coastal Risk and Hazard Commission and the New Hampshire Coastal Adaptation Work Group has invited us to join and to provide feedback on the commission's draft recommendations, which they just released in November of 2015. The commission was established by the legislature in 2013. Their charge was to use peer-reviewed scientific literature to recommend strategies communities can use to prepare for impacts of storm surges, sea level rise, and increase in precipitation. Discussion groups will take place on December 8th from 1:00 to 3:00, and December 17th from 6:00 to 8:00 for communities in the Great Bay, and other times for other coastal communities. I attached a copy of the flyer to the report, and I will be attending the December 8th from 1:00 to 3:00. If anybody else wants to attend, I'm going. Okay. The next is, the Director of IT and I have been working on our, with our website hosting company, Upgrade the Town Website. While we had a complete overhaul three years ago, we've heard some issues with the current site finding information and using it on devices other than computers. Majority of people don't use computers any longer to surf the web. With that in mind, we'll be working the site to be more user-mobile technology-friendly. We should see a new site shortly up after the new year. If you have any suggestions, please feel free to contact me or the IT Director. So if you see something that's missing that you always thought we should have, shoot me an email and say, "Have we have a look at that?" So I can make sure we try to include it. I'm happy to announce the hiring of a new Executive Assistant, Wendy Chase of Newfields, New Hampshire. Ms. Chase is a Newmarket native with 30 years of municipal experience, starting her career here in Newmarket, in the Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office, and has worked for the past 10 years as the Planning and Zoning Administration Administrator in North Hampton, New Hampshire. She has broad experience in municipal administration and clerical work. We have a search committee that reviewed 107 resumes and whittled that down to seven individuals we brought in for interviews, and all those individuals had extensive municipal and executive experience. So they all worked in similar positions somewhere else. I was very pleased, actually, with the pool that we had, the talent pool. I was a little concerned at first, but we really lucked out. But with Ms. Chase's knowledge of municipal government and of the community, we felt that she was the perfect fit for the position. She'll begin December 10th, and will have some training time with Ms. Castle. With that, I'd be remiss if I did not publicly thank Kathy Castle for her service to this community. For those who don't know, Kathy will be retiring on December 16th, after 20 years of working as the Executive Assistant to the Town Administrator. Kathy's been the glue that's held the town office together over the past 20 years. She's gone through many challenges, and many administrators, and many counselors, and she's handled it all professionally and with grace. I personally can't not thank her enough for making my job easier the three years I've been here. We're truly losing one of our greatest assets, and she will be missed, but I want to congratulate her also on her much-deserved retirement. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Questions or comments? This is the first. No one has it. All right. Well, I got a few.
Short report.
Mr. Chair, you're asking if we're still in a drought?
Oh, yeah.
We are still in a stage-three drought. I have heard from the Water and Sewer Director.
Next, could you just let us know how close we are to...
Sure.
Couple of other things. Just to note, the Arbor Park, for people that are watching this and don't know where Arbor Park is, it's the one behind the bus station in the center of town.
Correct.
The website, being mobile-friendly, just real quick. Last time we updated the website, the Veterans Database got totally misplaced, wasn't even on the website. So we make sure that...
We are aware of that. Yep.
And the coastal recommendations, we have the invitation, but the link in the PDF does not link to anything. It's like, not a link, it's a PDF. You know what I mean?
Yep.
Is there any way we can get the link to the recommendations, or just direct us where those would be?
Yep.
And, of course, we all will miss Kathy as well. Unless there are other comments or questions, Committee Reports. Who has a Committee Report? Counselor Thompson.
I actually have one, which is great. Budget Committee met on November 23rd and November 30th. It was two nights in succession. We reviewed the town budget. The first night was the Town Administrator's presentation, and then, this past Monday, on the 30th, the major department heads that were requested to come in came in and spoke and answered any questions that the Budget Committee might have. The questions were good regarding CIP and capital reserves and water, things like that, but generally fairly straightforward. The next meeting is next Monday, December 7th, which is the school budget work session. That will be continued to a second night if needed. Not sure, but right now, that's the 7th. And the public hearing for the town budget will be held here on the 14th of December. So I believe that's posted now.
It is.
Yep. That's what I've got.
Thank you. Any questions for Counselor Thompson? Any other Committee Reports? It is December. All business resolutions of the second reading. I will, totally lost my train of thought. I'll accept the motion on Resolution 2015-16-25, amending the membership to the Economic Development Committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Do you have any, like, pre-briefing of this, or...
It was recommended that we look at shrinking the size of the committee. Looking at it, usually you have an odd number, so you don't have a tie vote, and so we just recommended eliminating one member of the NCDC and one member of the Newmarket, the Business Association. Those are vacant seats. So it was sort of a...
Mm-hmm. Another vacation position.
Right.
Counselor Thompson.
First one, on the resolution, we've got a typo of New Hampshire. Did I...
Where?
Oh, yeah. Hamster.
Minor. My bigger question is that with the membership changing, should we vote to do so? We were provided a list of the members, and in going through it with the changes to Counselor Rose, but with one...
It's not a current list.
Okay. That's kind of what I wanted to do, is, is one of those people ostensibly either from the Business Association or the NCDC potentially going to pick up the Member-at-Large position and fill it that way?
Exactly.
Okay. That's it.
Other questions or comments?
So, just a quick question. So, is the council, to refresh my memory, it's been a while since we did this, did the council appoint or vote for everybody that was on that? I'm assuming we did.
Anyone that was at-large?
Right.
Okay.
So, well, I think we also voted for the Committee, for the members. Didn't we vote?
No, the Planning Board sent their own member.
No, for the council?
The council, that's correct.
Yeah, I thought...
We didn't vote on who we sent.
You and I were initially...
Initially, and then it became you and Amy. It was appointed.
Right.
Okay. Was it appointed by the Chair, or was it voted on? That's all, I'm just curious, was there...
I don't know.
I think it was appointed by the Chair.
Okay. So, my question is...
Actually, I can answer that. Originally, they were appointed by the Chair, but the rules of the council were amended this year that the nominations have to be approved by the council. So, first time, yes, it was appointed by the Chair, second time, it was by the council.
So, all that aside, which is, which is fine, the Planning Board will name their member, the NCDC will name their member, and then the three at-large, we will name.
Correct. Okay, good.
So, the only thing I would suggest is if we do have anybody come forward, hopefully we have somebody come forward to, you know, fill the three at-large. We get, if there's anybody that's already been on the Committee, we just get their attendance just to help us in making the decision.
Yep.
Thank you.
Counselor Weinstein.
So, is there currently a vacancy?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was...
I think there's two. Was there two, or one?
One.
Okay. I mean, we've, just for the record, we've had, I can't remember, honestly, the last meeting we had, 11 people. I mean, it's, that's really what initiated this. It's just unwieldy. So, you know, it was very, very difficult to get a quorum, so I think this makes sense. Anyway.
Is there a reason we have two Counselors on here? We had two Counselors on here before because it was such a large Committee. Seems to me there should be one Counselor, like this one Planning Board, and allow more at-large voices. I don't know what other Counselors, what other members of the council think.
I was wondering the same thing. I would rather see another at-large member, personally.
It's, every other Committee, we only, like, the Planning Board, that we only have one. See, this is the only one, we had two, and I think it's because we thought it was such a high-priority issue at the time we created this. But I feel like the role of this at this point, one Counselor, is enough. We could have an alternate, like we do for the other Committees. That's just my personal perspective.
Is that, so are we modifying the proposal if we do that?
That's my suggestion. I don't know what other Counselors think. Well, I know that several have been shaking their heads, but I don't know what everyone... The two that are on, if you want to speak through it.
For me, I don't have a, listen, I think at the end of the day, most of the recommendations that are going to ultimately be made, and I could be wrong, but the council's going to have to vote for changes, at least in ordinances and whatnot. So, I mean, personally, I think, I don't have an aversion to two Counselors. You know, I'm not, I don't have a whole lot of, I wouldn't fall on a sword over it, but I think because the council is ultimately going to have to, for example, if we change the zoning on, for elderly housing, which is one initiative that we're waiting to get some feedback from the Planning Board on, you know, as far as what the ordinance is going to look like. I think, I don't think it's a bad thing to have two Counselors, particularly if Counselor can't make it. Now, I do not believe I missed a meeting. Steve could check, but I didn't miss a meeting. You were at most of them when you were there, and Amy's been at most of them, so, you know, that's just my take. I don't have an aversion to it. We had, we had a lot of absences. That's, that I can tell you. So, and most of those absences, and Steve can pretty much verify it, and you've got the attendance, I think, more than not, it was the at-large members. And I could be wrong, but I...
That or other Committees.
Yeah. I mean, it's just a, you know, it's just my thought, so...
Counselor Pike.
Yeah, I, I don't have a strong feeling about it one way or the other, but if you have two Counselors that are engaged and willing to attend regularly, then it's probably a strength. And, you know, if you started to see that there was a groundswell of at-large people that felt they were being denied an opportunity to be on the Committee, but, you know, I'm not sure that that exists at this point, so...
Yeah, like, again, I'm not willing to fall on my sword for this either. It just seems odd to me that out of all the Committees, we have this one that has two Counselors on it. I think it made sense at the time, when we had 11 people on the thing. Now we're going down to like a seven, where I feel like one Counselor probably, and allowing more at-large is probably like a fair representation, and honestly, doesn't force Counsel, like, two Counselors to be on like three different subcommittees.
Well, you could poll us. I mean, I don't feel strongly one way or the other, so...
Take a quick poll, because I don't want to belabor this. Not that we have a heavy agenda.
I'll go with the proposal as it is. I'm fine with it. Two Counselors.
The one who's probably going to be affected by this most, in the short term.
I don't have a strong feeling. You know, I mean, being on it right now, now whether that's going to change upcoming, whether, that I don't know. I, I'm fine the way it is, and if it changes, that's, that's okay, too. I mean, heaven knows I've got enough on my plate at the moment, and the, and I think to, to the point, a lot of the work has been done. I'm going to pay attention to it anyway. So, it may be to Dale's point that if there's a groundswell of people that come forward and want to be on it, I don't know. We could change it at that point, too. I...
Okay.
I don't know.
Counselor Weinstein.
I tend to side on the, on the position that the more people we can get involved, the better. So if there's an opportunity to have another at-large member, I would welcome that. That said, I know it's hard to get people to participate in Committees, so, you know, I could kind of go either way, but I would, if I had to make a choice, which I do, I would prefer to have another at-large member.
Everyone knows the way it is. Everyone knows my opinion. Counselor Burns.
I don't have a super-strong opinion either way, but I think because this is the only Committee that has two, and I understand at the time, it made sense, but now it, we're kind of making it a smaller Committee, so I think it might make more sense to have one Counselor and then an alternate for those times when somebody can't make it, if that ever happens, and we kind of pay attention to what's going on anyway. And then have another, and again, you know, kind of what Counselor Weinstein is, it is hard to get people to join the Committee, so, I don't know if that would be, I don't know. I think it'd be good to have somebody else from the town on there, but, or from the community on there, but, I don't know. I'm okay with changing.
So, that's a...
Yeah, so that's, I'm okay with changing it. I think it would be, you know, align with what we do with the other Committees. I think that would probably make the most sense.
Counselor Pickering.
One Counselor.
Then my suggestion would be to make, somebody make a motion to amend the resolution to have four at-large members and one Town Counselor, and vote it up and vote it down.
Does someone like, want to make a motion to that effect?
Sure, I'll make motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the amendment. Seeing now, Mr. Administrator of the Vote.
Wait, sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor Thompson.
I didn't go fast enough. If there is a meeting, and again, it may not happen, but if that fourth at-large seat isn't taken, we have six. We do not have, things could, could be tied if, should that ever come up. I'm not sure that it has at this point. Not sure how much of an issue, but that would be the only pitfall that I could see. Hopefully, somebody will step forward and get into that fourth seat, but that would be the only thing that I would, that I would say could be a downer, if, if the EDC had to vote on something. But, again, whether it's happened or not, I don't think it has.
Counselor Levy.
Yeah, on that point, if we don't have, if we don't have enough people at-large, I don't think it makes any sense, you know, to have six members, just personally. In other words, if, if we don't have this groundswell of people that want to get on the Committee, for sake of argument, I would prefer having seven people than six.
We could argue that about every Committee, though. If there's not enough people, you know what I mean?
I know what you mean, except I think if we're going to try to, you know, whether it's, whether it's elderly housing, whatever it may be, I think if people, you know, we've heard a lot from people wanting to try to get the right types of businesses into the town, help with the tax rate as best we can, I, I think it would be beneficial to have a seven-member board. I just, let's put it this way, if we, if we, if we change it and we don't have enough people, I think we should reconsider.
We totally could go back to having a conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I would do that, because otherwise, it's somewhat ridiculous.
Agreed.
I mean, you know...
Counselor Weinstein.
I just have a question, I guess. Are there many opportunities for the EDC to vote on items? Does that happen?
Yeah, well, we voted...
When we talk about zoning, I guess, because when we talk about zoning, that's going to be the Planning Board and then us.
No, we spent, we spent the better part of two hours, if memory serves me, Steve, discussing the types of businesses that would theoretically be going in, on 152. I think that was the largest, for whatever reason, part of the discussion.
Whether we keep farming in, whether we keep this type in, that type in, and those types of votes.
Now, does that happen every meeting? No, but I mean, that was like, it went on and on and on, and we didn't have a full Committee. We had, we had a quorum, but, you know, there, I think there will be, I think the, you know, it's up to the, listen, if the town, you know, if we get to a point where we think we need to hire someone to help in the office, or, you know, things of that nature, I think economic development is something the town, I think it has, not that other Committees aren't important, but I think, I think it has, you know, more of an impact potentially long-term on the town.
I totally agree. It's a super-important Committee.
So, I mean, based on that, you know, if we don't have, you know, if you want to vote to do this, it's fine. If we don't have enough members, or the...
Then can it come back up?
Or the members that, you know, put their name in, never show up, I think we should have a discussion about it.
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, you know, it doesn't make sense. I don't, I don't like, you know, going to a meeting and having four people absent every meeting, or, you know, making ourselves crazy trying to get a quorum. And Steve spent, I don't know how many different meetings trying to get a quorum.
I feel like shrinking this is, part of shrinking this is to help prevent that.
That's true. Absolutely. But in the same vein, I would, I just want to make sure that the people that are going to do it are going to be committed, you know? I mean, I don't expect everybody to, you know, not take a vacation because of a meeting, but if you take a look at the attendance, I think it will be telling. So, I'll leave it at that.
So, the motion on the table is for...
Amendment Resolution 2015-16-25, to have four members at-large and to have one Town Counsel member.
So, a yea vote is for one Council Member, four at-large.
Correct.
Is there any more discussion? Seeing now, the vote.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Pickering.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
So now we're back to the original motion, which is just passing this as amended.
Mm-hmm.
Any more discussion on this? Seeing now, Mr. Administrator of the Vote.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Pickering.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Well, I want it to be seven, but I don't like the composition. It's going to pass anyway, so I'm going to, I'm going to stick with my, my position there.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
New quizzes and correspondence. No nominations to consider, ordinances and resolutions in the first reading. Resolution 2015-16-26, Resolution relating to changing the calculation for holiday pay. Whereas, Section 4.01, Holidays of the Town's Personnel Policy states as follows, quote, "Employees shall be paid an annual total of no more than 96 hours for the listed holidays," end quote. Underline added to show language to be removed. Whereas, the 96 hours is based upon five eight-hour days, and whereas, several departments maintain non-standard hours, and whereas, striking an annual total of no more than 96 hours will streamline application of the policy, now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve the modification of Section 4.01, Holidays Striking an Annual Total of No More Than 96 Hours, first reading, December 2nd, 2015. You're going to need to come with some real strong explanation for that.
Yeah.
Correspondence or closing comments by Town Counselors? Counselor Pike.
Yeah, just more of a question. Do we have some sense of when the, you know, I know we've had the proposals, and you guys have been talking about the efficiency project. Do you, do you have some sense on when that will sort of play out, what timeline looks like on...
Yeah, I thought we mentioned last meeting, but maybe I, maybe I'm misremembering. The, we actually met before this, have settled on one organization that we are going to propose to the Council to contract with. Town Administrator's going to get hold of the organization to shore up the, like, not to exceed amount, so it's closer to what an actual amount will be, so we can vote on a resolution to, for him to sign a contract.
So, next meeting, we'll have the first...
Hope is, the hope is for next meeting to actually have a first reading.
Great, thanks. Good to know.
It's more of a question to Steve. Is there any update, Steve, on the EDC zoning?
No, I have nothing this week, because of the holiday last week, so...
Is there a, can we, is there, is it, is there a chance we can maybe, like, button, at least get some kind of verbiage, you know, by January?
I don't know what the Planning Board's schedule is at this point. I mean, that's...
Well, I think the planner primarily, it's, you might want to just ask Diane, because I think it's the planner who's going to work with John primarily on getting some kind of language, just to sort of not have another year go by, because we've been in limbo for months.
Six.
I mean, our last meeting was like, two months ago, and then they were going to work on it, and I appreciate people are busy, but at the end of the day, it would, I don't want to see six months go by and have nothing, so, it'd be nice to, so...
Any other comments? Counselor Pickering.
Just a question, could someone update me as to where we are with selling surplus to town households?
I want to get the committee back together, to review those again and make sure, from what the information I have, to see what we want to do.
Could we schedule that for before the next council meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Who's on the committee, I forget?
Counselor... Sorry.
Counselor Pickering, Nazaro, and Weinstein.
We've met once, it went over what we thought we wanted to sell. Could you send out a reminder email to us all about the status of what we had said we wanted to get rid of? Any other closing comments?
Yes.
Counselor Pickering, go ahead.
I just would like to say, seeing probably six or seven past councils in a row have done this, and I never have found it offensive, but I would like to extend my sympathy to the Jones family out on Grant Road. Alan Jones passed on on December the first, been in Newmarket forever, and fought a hard battle, but didn't make it, and it's a loss for the town. Extend my sympathy to his family.
Thank you, Counselor Pickering.
Thank you.
One last comment for me, and I hate to, it's a hard switch from that last comment. So, recognizing the school board has been incredibly busy with a whole bunch of stuff, to include budget and searching for new superintendent, and facilities work, we have nailed down several dates that we think will work for a combined meeting. Once we get the date that we think will actually work for us, we'll get it out to the entire council.
Is that going to happen before next year?
Before next fiscal year, or before next, before the election cycle.
Before the election.
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely, yeah. It's probably going to still be close to the deliberative session, so it's probably, I think, talking tactics or strategies for the following fiscal year, or following year is probably what the conversation's going to revolve around. Our next regular meeting is December the sixteenth. If there are no other comments, so, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.